Sorry, we're a few minutes late. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the uh national or the uh pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you all. Um roll call, Jody.
Osborne.
Here.
Euler.
Here.
Bentley, not present. Jones, here. Kushner.
Here.
Thank you.
Through a little minute from May eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Need to approve.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Kushner?
Yes. Adoption of the agenda.
I moved to approve. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes. Hey, we have several proclamations that are coming up next. First one is for Juneteenth, recognition of Juneteenth for this year. Anybody? Anybody in the, come on up. Anybody would like to be up here, be more happy to come on up? Hello? Whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the President of the United States declared June nineteenth as the Juneteenth Day of observance across the nation. To acknowledge and celebrate the end of the Civil War and the emancipation of Black Americans. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, almost ninety years after the country was founded. And more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation. Enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas, found sea boarded by Union soldiers that they were freed from bondage. And whereas. As first time citizens, Black Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations of new lives. And traditions across the country known by many names as Jubilee Day, Freedom Day, and Liberation Day. And whereas since two thousand three, Juneteenth has been recognized by law in Missouri. As Emancipation Day and dedicated by. A statute inscribed that says Americans will vote some part of the day to remember. The proclamation that began the full realization for all people in the United States. Of the self-evident truth that all people are created equal. Whereas the citizens Warrensburg are urged to recommit with purpose and resolve the work of equity. Equality and justice for all. Now therefore be resolved that I Jim Cusker, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, along with the Warrensburg City Council. Do hereby proclaim June nineteenth to be the Juneteenth Day of observance in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
You want to stand here for the next one?
It'll allow them to read tonight. Uh LV LGVQ plus Pride Month, June two thousand twenty-three proclamation. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people. But the fulfillment of this promise has long been long in coming for so many Americans. And whereas LGBTQ plus citizens in our local communities face discrimination. Simply for being who they are and who they love. And whereas while society at large is slowly recognizing new definitions of sexuality and gender. We must acknowledge that need for education and awareness remains vital to hind discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the city of Warrensburg is strengthened by and thrives upon. The rich diversity of its residents, all whom contribute the vibrant character of our city. Through our Warrensburg Diversity Inclusion Committee Commission, we strive to embrace diversity and foster inclusion of all citizens. And whereas the city of Warrensburg recognize the importance. And contributions of the members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transsexual, queer plus community. And is committed to serving, supporting uh visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in our community and. Whereas celebrating Pride Month influences. Awareness and provides support and advocacy for Warrensburg's LGBTQ plus community and is. An opportunity to engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights for all. Now be it resolved that I Jim Cusker, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg. Along with the City Council of Warrensburg, you hereby proclaim the month of June two thousand twenty-three as LV. LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. All right, thank you very much. Back to the next one. It's a shorter one, but it's about a real important person. Known Peggy forever. So I'm very happy to read this up here with her leaving the city's employees soon, but. Uh Peggy Hostetler Employee Recognition Proclamation. Whereas Peggy Hostetler is a valued employee of the city of Warrensburg and enrolls as project manager. Slash admin. And whereas Peggy has been a loyal and dedicated employee to the city as demonstrated. By her twenty-four years of service to the organization. And whereas Peggy routinely assists numerous departments in responding to and addressing issues. That require knowledge of the city and its operations. And whereas Peggy has served. As a vital first point of contact for residents of the city of Warrensburg, making sure their needs are addressed. And whereas Peggy's last day of service in the city of Warrensburg will be on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore, I Jim Cusker, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, along with members of the Warrensburg City Council. Would like to thank Peggy Hostetler for her dedicated service to the city of Warrensburg. And recognize the critical role and significant contributions in the excellent performance of her profession. Don't go away.
Don't go away.
I got, I got orders. I got told to make sure you stay up here.
I appreciate that. Now, and in keeping with the proclamation, I'll also attempt to keep this short as well. Cause there are a few things that I wanted to put in the proclamation that I felt best was reserved for a moment like this. It is truly been a privilege to be able to work with Peggy um and. As part of her lasting impact has really been a legacy of being able to connect with people. And that, that can even be demonstrated by multiple things, but this was a, a really touching story and something that I witnessed where. Bill was getting all hot and heavy about something. Only a few people that know Bill. We, we know what we're talking about. And so Peggy was just like, Bill, calm down. And he just went. Quiet. And that worked. And so that's shown to me what Peggy has meant to this organization. And it's about the legacy that she leaves, the people that she's touched. Um, and I think that's also demonstrated by my former predecessor, Bob Crum, who is also here. Um, he was the first to hire her. And so we've had several conversations and each time was, how's Peggy doing? Is she still doing excellent work? And so I'm very proud to be able to uh send her off. And I'm also very excited that Bob was also able to make it tonight. So that's all I have, but thank you, Peggy.
Can't say they've worked for the city of Warrensburg, but haven't either been fixed by Peggy or taken care of by Peggy or. What have you? Our kids grew up together on the same street. We work with each other. To make sure everybody got straightened out and not straightened out or told what to do. So it's gonna be a miss for you, Peggy. Love seeing you around town, hopefully.
Oh, yeah.
All right, because that crew on the back row is just.
You know, that's. I got a crew up here.
Between a few police force directors and the president superintendent and. It's been a great group. Oh, yeah, everybody. If, if you haven't worked here for a while, you know Peggy. Even the new people though.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Not only was she taking care of the police force, but she paid two or three of the police department's bills.
All right, some, some of the things that she's done, and sorry, you get to watch this. Some of the things that she's done over the years have been great for the city and both the departments. She has made such. Shine with the, I can remember helping her years ago go through cemetery books, trying to figure out who's buried where. Um, when we had a horrendous, uh, as everybody calls it, snowmageddon. Um, it was her and Guy Parsons who were able to fumble through the FEMA paperwork to get everything taken care of. Plus keep these two guys over here on the right straightened out. So there's been major accomplishments by Peggy and we're gonna miss her today. All right, one more here. Matthew Sore.
The first time you yelled my name like that.
Well, if I knew you remembered your middle name, I'd have done that. Matthew Sore Employee Recognition Proclamation. Uh Matthew, whereas Matthew Sore is a valued employee of the city of Warrensburg in his role as Division Chief of Training and Safety. And whereas Matthew is dedicated to developing the knowledge, skills, and abilities of Warrensburg firefighters through the development. And delivery of training programs. And whereas the Warrensburg Fire Department has experienced an unprecedented. Need to rapidly develop. A largely new workforce without compromising the quality and safety of service delivery. And whereas. Matthew secured six training courses at no cost. Through requests made with the Missouri Division of Fire Safety to provide leadership, technical rescue. And active shooter response training. And whereas. Matthew has coordinated the department's training committee and the development of a, of a regular training curriculum. Annual skills performance, quarterly skills assessments, and apparatus opera training, operator training. And whereas Matthew has secured a medical director and developed emergency medical response protocols. That has afforded the department the opportunity to reobtain its EMS training entity. And provide quality EMS training to department staff. And whereas. The Warrensburg Fire Department has continued to provide a high quality of service. To the community as a result of the great training programs coordinated by the Division Chief Sore. Now therefore, I Jim Cusker, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, along with members of the City Council. Would like to thank Matthew Sore for his dedicated service to the city of Warrensburg. And recognize the critical role and contributions in the excellent performance of his profession. A lot of reading. But it's great reading.
You did good.
All great subjects. Okay, that takes us down to a presentation by. The presentation of community environmental survey results by Warrensburg High School. Want to know, come on up.
Okay, are you ready? Well, I'd like to start by thanking you guys for having us be able to speak about this issue today that is very important to us. And which we believe to be very important to the town of Warrensburg as well. Uh, we are all uh either former or present members of Warrensburg High School and along with that, we are also members of the Warrensburg High School Environmental Club. Today, we're here to talk about sustainability, specifically sustainability in Warrensburg. Um, one of our missions that we had in our school year uh this uh year, last year. Um, is we wanted to create a survey to ask, to ask multiple questions to the people of Warrensburg about sustainability. Uh, in the city. Um, and so it was with a multitude of questions that we're going to be discussing here today. So first, that was our introduction, and now we're going to talk about our objective and the demographics of our survey. So first, our objective is plainly put is to emphasize the importance of adopting a sustainable city plan within Warrensburg. So we are just simply here to relay the facts that we found in our survey that we had uh in the city. We're not here to. Give you a very specific plan. We're just here to give you the facts and see what you do with it, I guess. Um, and now next, uh, the demographics of our survey. So first fifty-five percent of respondents for forty-one years or. Uh, or older and eleven percent of respondents were under the age of eighteen. And the rea- uh, the reason that this is very important is because it shows that our survey was able to go beyond our high school. Though we are high school students and uh it would be easy for us to reach out to the people in our high school. This survey was able to go beyond that and reach um an older demographic, which only asked of the validity of the survey. So. With that, uh, to our next student to talk about next issue.
Um, so we uh, and during our survey, we found that there are some, a lot of different topics that are, that are very important to the people of Warrensburg. And so uh, there were specifically three different topics that we're going to discuss today. The first is recycling. Um, and we found in our survey that most of the people of Warrensburg um want free, reliable, and convenient recycling. Some of the, of respondents uh said that they wanted a service for recycling other than public services. And eighty-one point five percent of respondents uh said that access to recycling is very important. And just over fourteen point eight percent said that it is moderately important. And uh, our survey found that the respondents expressed the need for recycling available in Warren, uh, for all Warrensburg addresses, not just the addresses. Um, uh, not just those within the city limits.
Um, our second issue was renewable energy. Um, eighty-one point one percent of people wanted more renewable energy. And fourteen point seven thought that it was important. Um, and respondents also seemed pretty open to incentives for using renewable energy such as tax-free base. Um, for own renewable resources like wind and solar energy.
Right, so next we have walkability. Um, so there is a resource available that shows the walkability score of each. Uh, town within Warrensburg or within the US and are scored as thirty-six out of a hundred. Um, which as a college town doesn't necessarily meet the needs of our population. Um, over ninety-five percent of the community want more accessible and. Safe walkways um throughout Warrensburg. And some commenters said that um. This is an extremely important issue considering the fact that we are a college town. Um, so uh, uh, this was also helping uh increase. Um. Traffic, uh, what's it called? Uh, efficiency, efficiency, traffic efficiency and reduce air pollution. Um, and a lot of respondents, oh, this was a very important topic.
Um, next is electric car charging stations. And this wasn't necessarily a very important one. But we just wanted to show that only twenty-nine percent actually found this important. And we thought this was important to show because. It shows that not everybody was just clicking, oh, this is the most important issue. This is the most important issue. We wanted to show that. People were paying attention to the questions and did actually give their, the answer they thought was most likely.
And so. For our city sustainability plan, we found that a lot of citizens in Warrensburg want Warrensburg to take action. And um, we know that we care uh um about a secure and more sustainable future for our citizens. That also help achieve long-term economic growth. And uh, we found that ninety percent of Warrensburg citizens expressed a need for sys- uh, for a city's sustainability plan.
Um, this slide just shows some things that we also asked questions on. And people found important, but not quite as important as our first three issues that we talked about. Um, stuff like maintaining pretty city tree status and creating more bike lanes and stuff like that. Next is the comments that we pulled from our survey and they were said by the citizens of Warrensburg. And I'll just summarize most of them up. Um, someone said using less styrofoam and maybe using. Incentives for styrofoam, especially for schools and restaurants, try to use less. Um. There were a lot about recycling and there were a couple about using more native species of plants and. In lawns instead of having just regular, regular lawns. And then. Uh, we also, us and some citizens in Warrensburg said that we're very happy that you guys are recognizing these issues. And that you're listening to us today.
So in conclusion, we'd like to, once again, thank you for hearing um what uh. This issue that is very important to us and which I hope you will see is also important to the people of Warrensburg and uh. That we are pinpointing some of the issues that are most important to the citizens of Warrensburg. Um, and I'd like to reiterate the fact that this is just, we're just trying to relay the facts to you guys that we have seen and. We hope that something is done to help create, um, make Warrensburg a more sustainable city. So thank you for listening to our ideas today.
Yeah, I want, I want to say thank you all for coming out and for doing this. Aubrey's your teacher over here, so. And she's a very valuable member of our s- uh, task force for energy sustainability here and also. Citizens for Environmental Action. You're out there quite a bit with that too. So we appreciate it very much what you're doing and we. Definitely will take your notes. We have them in our minutes now, so thank you so much.
Yeah, it, it's a great project and a great way you brought that forward and we really, and uh. We'll take this to heart. It's things that we, we need to work on. Would you like to get up here and get a better picture of them?
Uh, that'd be great.
Young people, I applaud your good work.
Okay. Number seven. First and second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a contract. With Higgins Asphalt Paving Company Incorporated for the twenty twenty-three street maintenance. Hot Mix Program overlay in the city of Warren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the brief notices and ordinance for contract for first and second reading. Um, since we are tackling a lot of areas this year, um, for your convenience, uh, included in the packet. Was inclusive of the areas that we were working in. Um, but as a recap, uh, we revamped the street maintenance programs. To be inclusive of fixing curb and gutter and also ADA rooms. Uh, one thing that we also did this year, um, prior to um, the contractor coming. Uh, we uh fixed and we replaced a stormwater cross. Uh, so that was failing and so we're able to do that in-house and uh be able to save a little bit of money that way. So, uh, do you have any questions? Um, that'd be happening.
How many road miles this year, remind me, please?
Now, around three.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Move to approve second reading by title.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Kushner?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a contract agreement with Higgins Asphalt Paving Co., Inc. For the twenty twenty-three street maintenance program hot mix overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven point two, first and second reading, an ordinance authorizing city manager and city clerk to execute a contract agreement. With Cat Excavation Incorporated for the Cooper Extension, Cooper Boulevard Extension Project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor and Council. Uh, so before it's night, there's another ordinance for first and second reading. Um, so just to reiterate, um, what we had discussed in the budget work session. Um, that this project will ultimately be fully funded by the Transportation Development Dollars District. Um, so. Uh, that, that is how we're able to get this project completed. Um, there, one of the things that we're doing with this project, um, so we, staff has been in the process of. Also revamping our design standards and specifications uh for our roads. Uh, among other things. And with this will be a pilot for. Uh, what our new standard for our subbase will be for uh our roads. And so we had contemplated on going with concrete pavement or asphalt, but uh, concrete pavement. And with the structural integrity of the revised subgrade. Um, we did feel the need to go with concrete since it was more expensive. So uh, we're piloting this, see how it works. And then we do definitely look forward to. Um, sharing with you all, all the things that we've been working on with respect to our design standards and specifications. Uh, so with that, I will uh stand three questions.
One thing I would like to make note for the record is that this Cooper Boulevard extension is being paid for through the Transportation Development District. Those funds could only be used for improvements in this area.
And knowing the area, we uh. When they did the survey, rock is not an issue.
In, in the places.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, no. Um, but we did have a line item in there in the event that there is rock.
Or rock loss. Okay, thank you. Questions concerning motions?
Move to approve second reading by title.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a contract agreement with Cat Excavation, Inc. For the Cooper Boulevard Extension Project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Gonna pull up a chair for the rest of the night. Uh, first and second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a contract with. Visu Sewer of Missouri LLC for the twenty twenty-three sanitary sewer main lining project in the city of Warrensburg.
Again, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so before you, there's also an ordinance for first and second reading. Um, for, this is uh, for our sanitary sewer lining. Uh, so one of the things that we're going to be doing a little bit different. Um, with this is that we are going to be uh performing smoke testing before we line and then also after we line. To establish that it was um wholly lined and free of any leaks. Um, eventually we'll start um smoke testing in other areas of town. Um, to identify uh where other points of inflow and infiltration are occurring within our collection system. Um, and there are two storm sewer um lines that we plan to do as well. And so the, the point is um. Fix it before the pipes ultimately collapse. So uh. Trying to also establish that we're taking little bites at storm sewer. Um, and hopefully making improvements to our stormwater, um, just little bits at a time with the money that we do have.
One question, how much are we gonna be doing? I mean, did it linear feed or how did, how's that uh?
We are approximately just a little over seven dollars a year.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? And motions? Motion to second reading by title.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Kushner?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a contract agreement with Visu Sewer of Missouri LLC. For the twenty twenty-three sanitary sewer main lining project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, number seven dash four, first and second reading, an ordinance authorizing city manager and city clerk to execute a cooperative agreement for services between the city of Warrensburg and the Warrensburg Chamber of Commerce for door access control systems at the Warrensburg Depot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Another ordinance for first and second reading. Um, so we had uh previously um discussed that the improvements that we seem to make at the depot um with respect to putting key bobs uh cameras um in uh sensory lights in the restrooms just due to the increase in vandalism. Um, and to uh uh provide um for efficiencies so you can unlock and lock the door without having chase officers doing that manually, which they do currently. Um, so that will free up officers to do other things versus tending to the depot um when there's not, no vandalism occurring. Uh, so that's the highlights of what we're doing and then contained within the um, the agreements. It is a cost share um with the chamber. Um, and the big point there is that within ninety days of completion of the project, it should be completed sometime this summer. So it'll start this summer and end this summer. Um, that they'll reimburse us um ninety days after completion of the project. Uh, Suzanne Taylor is also here. Um, if you'd like to speak to this item as well.
Thank you very much.
You don't want to call?
No, I actually, we just appreciate your consideration. I do have one of our board members here and I need a couple um are zooming in, but thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
That's an important issue down there. It's been going on for years, uh, to get a grab hold of it. Questions, concerns?
We'll have access.
To the doors?
To the doors.
Um, so we're still fine tuning the access point. Uh, cause in addition to that, there is an app that can be used. Um, so the app you'd be able to lock and unlock the doors. Um, so far, it would be myself, Danielle, Suzanne, um possibly a member with PD, but it's more of a going over the licenses. Um, so trying to nail that down, but we have a rough idea of who that would be.
I guess I'm wondering with um Amtrak coming in, would there be a way for the bathrooms to be available?
Yeah, that, that will all be, that'll all be fine.
Will be scheduled kind of like City Hall. It opens up at X time, closes at X time on its own.
It, it does have that functionality.
Okay.
Can I say something? I, I do get anticipation sometimes if the Amtrak is running late, so I have the uh affiliates.
Anything else? For motion?
Move to approve to second reading by title.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a cooperative agreement for ser- for services between the city of Warrensburg and the Warrensburg Chamber of Commerce for door access control systems at the Warrensburg Depot. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you can sit down for a little bit and recover. Um. Next one would be for Jody. Uh, first and second read and uh reading of an ordinance affirming section twenty-two point nine two levied and twenty-two point nine four. No automatic adjustments of the code ordinances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri upon receipt of notice under section three ninety-three point two seven five of the RSMO utility rate increase in the matter of Missouri American Water Company, Missouri Public Service Commission File Number WR two oh two two dash oh three oh three. That's a long one.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, you've seen this affirmation uh just a couple of months ago. Utility companies have been approaching the Missouri Public Service Commission with utility rate increases um due to the cost of providing their service. The city of Warrensburg um has already adopted an ordinance on basically allowing no automatic adjustments of our franchise tax amount. And this is um brought to you tonight to affirm the ordinances that are already in place. Um, Missouri American Water is the company at this time that has um prompted a notice to us. Um, they're receiving an increase of more than seven percent. It was approved May third, and so then they, of course, we received the notice. Are there any questions?
It would look like um. Motion, please.
Move to approve second reading by title.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
An ordinance affirming section two-two twenty-two def- dash ninety-two levied and twenty-two dash ninety-four, no automatic adjustments of the code of ordinances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Upon receipt of notice under section three nine three dot two seven five of the Missouri statute's utility rate increase in the matter of Missouri American Water Company, Missouri Public Service Commission File Number WR hyphen two thousand twenty-two hyphen zero three zero three. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, another first and second reading. Um, first and second reading of an ordinance authorizing McGuire Street Corridor project engineering contract with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, Inc. by Ms. Dula.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Speaking of projects that have been a long time in the making. Uh, the McGuire first study that we did on the McGuire Street Corridor was in twenty twelve. Um, that study was a tiger grant um through the local government that allowed us to assess the uh traffic conditions on the McGuire Street. We followed up um with the study uh in twenty sixteen focusing on the McGuire Street Highway fifty interchange. That study recommended a diverting diamond um to replace the existing bridge that is there. However, at that time uh funding for such a large project was not available. For the last several years, we have been working to identify a funding source uh for us to do the work that is necessary on the McGuire Street Corridor project. It continues to be a concern for our community and access point for our community. It truly is the heart um that runs through uh city of Warrensburg, connecting the north and the south um ends of our community. Um, City Council passed an ordinance in January of twenty twenty-one, calling for an election on April sixth to authorize seventeen million dollars in general obligation bonds for street and road improvement. Uh, that initiative was passed with nearly seventy-nine percent approval. Uh, when we went to the voters with that initiative, it was known that our priority would be the McGuire Street Corridor. Um, it was also known that we were going to try to apply for raised grants, rebuilding America's infrastructure with sustainability and equity. Um, to try to uh receive federal funding that would help us subsidize the cost of the bridge that is currently owned by MoDOT. Um, even though we were identified as a project of merit, we did not receive that during either the twenty twenty-one or the twenty-two raised grant uh process. However, um, we did issue the seventeen million dollars in general obligation bonds, and so we also know that the McGuire Street Corridor is still a street that needs to be addressed in our community. Um. We went back to the drawing board after not receiving those grants. Um, and we developed qualifications for the McGuire Street improvements. Uh, we knew we were looking for, wanted to be able to address the corridor. Um, still looking for opportunities to try to uh find funding to replace that bridge, but understanding that we might have to reset. Um, and, and we might have to approach and tackle this problem um differently than we had anticipated almost a decade ago. Um, we did go out uh for a request for qualifications. We had five firms submit. Um, three of those firms were selected for in-person interviews. The selection committee was comprised of uh diverse community partners, including city staff along with Mayor Jim Kushner, Councilmember Bruce Bruce Euler, Planning and Zoning Commission Chair Shari Vax, and MoDOT Kansas City Area Engineer Ben McKay, and Johnson County Economic Development Director Tracy Bratner. Um, through that competitive process, uh Burns and McDonald Engineering Company's qualifications and focus on process and people impressed the selection committee. Staff has been working very closely with Burns and McDonald to develop a scope of work to provide the professional technical and construction manager at risk procurement. Um, other professional resources, equipment, and materials. The scope of work for these two projects, the McGuire Street Corridor and the McGuire Street Highway fifty is included um in the proposal that you see tonight. Uh, project one, which is the McGuire Street Corridor, is about two hundred and fifty feet north of Spark Street to a hundred and fifty feet south of Broad Street. Project two uh is the interchange, and that's about two hundred and fifty feet north of Spark Street to a hundred and fifty feet north of Cooper Boulevard. Phase one and phase two of project one are included in this particular scope of work. We are really going to be focusing on the corridor. Um, phase one includes project management, build investigations, data collection and survey, conceptual analysis and recommendations, strategic funding development, community engagement and planning, the uh CMR procurement and utility coordination. Phase two includes project management, CMR support, engagement program implementation, preliminary plan development, final plan development, and construction services. Phase two will be defined and included as an amendment to the agreement based on the recommendations of phase one. Uh, only the conceptual analysis and recommendation of project two, which is the interchange, are included in this phase. It's sorry, in this scope of work. Trying to keep it all straight. Um. There are a few things I wanted to draw. Uh, that scope of work was included in your packet. Um, it is um, I think about thirteen, seventeen pages or so. Um, there are a few things I did want to draw your attention to, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the scope of work. We also have uh Brenda Mack who is our project lead on this from Burns and Mack, as well as Steve Keller, Kellerman, Kellerman um with Burns and Mack, who will be um doing the CMR procurement process for us. So if you have any specific questions for them, but a few of the things I wanted to draw council's attention to, um is the uh so uh one point one three nine, which is access management. Um, we know that access management along the McGuire Street Corridor is going to be very important to the success of this project. Um, whether that is improving traffic, but also maintaining strong relationships with our business owners and property owners and residents along that corridor. So we have dedicated four hundred and eighty hours, almost five hundred hours towards access management. Um, so I wanted to draw that attention to that. We are going to be very dedicated to the, to that aspect of this project. Um, the other section I wanted to draw attention to is one point one four, which is community engagement and planning. We have seven hundred and sixty hours dedicated to community engagement and planning, just to demonstrate how important this is to our community. Important is to hear from our business owners, to hear from those property owners, but also the community at large who uses this corridor. Um, we have planned to we're very intentional about this. I want to make sure I got everything. Um. Burns and Mack will be hosting um a project website for us, an interactive map, um an online community survey. Uh, four rounds of social media assets for us to use on our Facebook and other channels for product awareness, community survey, visioning workshop, uh and vision and outcomes of the visioning workshop. Um, property owner tenant communication, one-on-one stakeholder interviews, uh the visioning workshop. And then there also, uh, we just got approval from Main Street that we will have a booth at Burfest um to be able to share the work that we've been doing on the McGuire Street Corridor up to that point in October. Um. Section one point one five will also be very important. That's the CMR procurement process when we will outline the qualifications and engagement of how we're going to try to find um the best uh general uh contractor to, to perform this work for us. That will also be very important, and that is the largest uh line item you will see there as far as time commitment. Uh, but one of the other ones I wanted to draw your attention to is one point one six, which is strategic funding plan. Um, as we've known along this, we, we do not have enough of our own money to do the Mag- the McGuire Street Corridor as well as the full interchange. Um, so we are continuing to work with uh a representative from Burns and Mack who is um looking at all the federal funding opportunities, is looking at all the state opportunities, and we're going to meet with them and figure out what are those grant opportunities out there, whether it's the um bridge improvement plan, if we're going to go for another raised grant. Um, particularly, uh, we are going for a safe, safe streets for all grit. That application is due July tenth. So we know that we will be applying for that one, and Burns and that has been already kind of on the outskirts, even though we're not completely under contract yet, um, understanding like what those applicant, application test requirements are going to be and working on that. Um, which brings me to my final point, um, before I'll open it up for any questions to leave all. You will see that there were two contracts in your um packet. Uh, there was the original contract that was submitted by, submitted by Burns and Mack. And then what our red line revisions were. We are still negotiating and working through those final contracts. Nothing will change with the scope of work. Um, but we wanted to go ahead and get this approved and authorized to enter into that contract. Um. Because we are working on that July tenth deadline, we don't want to have to wait till June twenty-sixth to get this underway. Again, nothing will change with the scope of work. It's really just um the, the contracts that we, a few items in there. Um. For project one, phase one, the total engineering costs are estimated to be one point three one point three million nine hundred, three hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Well, we'll, we'll call it one point four for ease there. Um, but the engineering for project two, the conceptual analysis and recommendations is about two hundred and eighty thousand. This is the total of one, one point six hundred seventy-five million, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. Um, the McGuire Street Improvements project will be paid for with the seventeen million dollars in general obligation provision on the twenty-one and twenty-two with approval of the Warrensburg voters in April twenty-one. Uh, strategic plan, this does focus on the strategic plan is focused one, um, investment in infrastructure as well as focused to growth and development. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Would you mind giving like a one-minute overview of what the vision, how it's going to look? Uh, we've got the environmental students who actually in their sustainability plan brought up a few questions and.
Yeah, we, we're not totally there yet. Like, that's what we're still, that's what we're still under there, and they're going to be doing the design and working on, but I can tell you what our priorities are. And we know that one of our priorities is going to be, um sorry, our priorities are storm water, um storm water control, improving water quality. I mean, you'll see that we have about eight hundred hours dedicated to that and there. Um, but probably what the group that was here before us is probably to be most interested is the um alternative um mo- modes of transportation, the ten-foot um pedestrian path or other kinds of mobile devices um that we are looking at to put along the McGuire Street Corridor to improve the things they were talking about, about walkability and connectivity in our community. So, um, we are, one of the things that was very impressive to us, um with the Burns and Matt crew, and one of the things that they presented was actually a solution for us to have pedestrian traffic um improved um on the railroad bridge over the railroad between the university and the rest of the north part of McGuire. So, um, we are very excited um to see what it burns in Mac. Once they finally are under contract, they have an opportunity to put their, um, I guess they don't really put pencil to paper anymore, but to put their, um, you know, fingers to keyboards and all that stuff. So anyways, once they have an opportunity to put their minds to it, we are very excited to see what they come up with. Um. But understanding that, that stormwater, um, pedestrian, and then also just that ease of traffic, um, congestion, how important that's going to be.
And the information they collect could, could help us with the rise grants too. I'm assuming we can piggyback off of that and have a lot of great information.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so that will be part of that strategic funding plan that um Drew is working on for us uh when that time comes to apply for that, for the, for the McGuire Street Bridge. Um. You know, the conversations that we've been having uh with the Missouri Department of Transportation as well, um just trying to put together a really good package that makes it competitive. And I think if we, you know, based on what Burns and Max sees, what we've seen, kind of based on the feedback that we got from our two applications um that did not get approved or awarded, uh, we might be able to put together, I'm a really competitive project, but we will see, we will have to weigh all those options because it does take time and money to apply for those grants.
I'm excited. I, I really enjoyed the conceptual drawings we saw of the bicycle bridge over there by the, by the school across railroad. bridge over there by the, by the school across railroad tracks that looked really nice and safe. So. All right, thanks.
And I would like to add too that as staff, we were very intentional about making sure that MoDoc had a seat at the table. And they're also excited about doing something with this bridge and they have noted on more than one occasion to get some sort of pedestrian facilities on the McGuire Street Bridge, whatever that ends up looking like. But we were very intentional about improving our partnership with MoDoc and so they've been with us every step of the way. So.
And which side of the street are we talking about? Some people.
Well, so we are trying to work very diligently to stay within our current right-of-way footprint. And so there might be parts of the corridor where it's on the east side. There might be times when it's on the west side. We are trying to, if we have a path on one side, still maintaining for an ADA sidewalk, accessible sidewalk on the other side, but that trail path might switch sides depending on where our right-of-way is.
I missed the hearing the other night with MoDoc. Are they fully aware of the increase for the J turns and the crossovers are going to add impact to the McGuire?
They are. We met with them early, the week before they had that meeting here and we did talk with them about, you know, putting in those J turns and what that impact is going to be. And I know that one of the engineers at MoDoc has already exchanged emails and had some back and forth with our traffic engineer at Burns.
Okay, cool. Cause that's going to dump a bunch of cars on thirteen again. Just against what we're trying to fix. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to stand for any more questions or Brenda, Steve, do you have anything you'd like to add or share?
Spontaneous speech, guys.
I wrote with the New Zealand construction director, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to mayor and council. I did want to point out that we're preparing all the procurement documents for McGuire, but we'll prepare those documents in fashion where if y'all choose to use CMR for other city projects, we'll have those documents available to you. So it's an investment not only for this project, but also for future projects. If you want to have to make a similar investment.
Could you explain CMR just?
Sure, briefly. So CMR is construction manager at risk. And essentially what that means is we will help you go out and find a construction manager partner that will ultimately build the project for you, but that construction manager will have to go and bid out all of the aspects of the project. People around here or in the area that are interested in concrete or asphalt or some storm work. It ensures you get very competitive process as opposed to design bid build, which most of you are used to. You don't always understand the bids that are coming in and the contractors submitting their [inaudible 0:0:59]. Great alternative delivery [inaudible 0:10:02]. Science to you all and we're here to help make it successful.
Anything else from the council? We have a possibility for a motion.
To approve second reading by title.
Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
First and second reading of an ordinance authorizing McGuire Street corridor project engineering contract with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, Inc. This is for adoption or rejection. Osborne?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're moving on to number eight. A resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, authorizing instruction of records held for the required period based on the Missouri adopted records retention schedule.
Yes. Thank you, mayor and city council. I've this is our normal practice for records that have reached their retention schedule with the secretary of state. And these records pertain to human resource department and submitted by our resource assistant, human resources assistant, Katie Taylor. And they're for your approval. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Move to approve second reading by title.
They won't go to second reading since this is a resolution.
I did that too.
Osborne?
Yes.
You got the first one good though, Dan.
Euler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Soon as Doug gets back there, next one is appearances for the council now. Here so. We have two here. Cody, you read everything all right?
Oh, yes, this Oscar. Yeah, yes, I can read that.
Okay.
Okay.
Mister Bill Reel? Now get close.
Close enough. I was actually pretty good. I've prepared a statement for you also, Peter Kushner, honored members of the city council, revered administrators, public servants and beloved citizens of Warrensburg. My name is [inaudible 0:10:28]. And I am currently the chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission of Warrensburg and a private citizen of Warrensburg for the last eight years. Today I address you as a private citizen. First and foremost, I must apologize. I have not been as available to the public as needed in my role as DIC chair. I've been preoccupied and thusly unaware of some circumstances that transpired at our annual Pride Month event that was held on June third, specifically the clear and present danger of threats of violence made against citizens of our community in our direct effort to instill fear and prevent rightful citizens from creating a more inclusive and safer place for the LGBTQI plus community. As this meeting marks our city's resolve to commit to being a community of inclusion, I wish to publicly condemn threats of violence against other groups within our community. I'll not relitigate the events of the past, nor will I engage in a circular debate about beliefs or ideology. This is for another time. What I offer instead is a reminder tool about our fundamental American beliefs in tolerating the opinions of others and engaging in peaceful protest or debate with people who hold different views than our own. Fear, threats of violence and plans to commit violence to submit others into compliance are tools of fascists, extremists and terrorists. They are un-American. We must be mindful of the tactics we use to express our outrage and our viewpoints. Thus, we embrace the ideals that we as Americans have sworn to defend against. To members of the LGBTQI plus community in attendance and those streaming online. For those of you who are, I hope you tell them the same, I will not tell you that the journey to equality will be peaceful, simple and trouble-free. They may already know this, but. Instead, what I will share with you is that you are loved. You have a right to exist, to be heard and to be treated justly as every other person who calls Warrensburg home. There are many in our community who would stand behind you to propel your fight forward. Others who will stand by your side to march with you towards equality. And there are those like me who will stand in front of you to embrace and shield you from the hate, vitriol, abuse, ignorance and fear mongering. You are not alone. Continue to inspire change. Continue to embrace the struggle. Resist and confront weaknesses, break down barriers. In time, we may be able to be part of a more inclusive world. But at the very least, we can create one for those who follow after us. Happy Pride Month. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Nordroll?
People of all. It's okay. Sorry to pronounce it. Pretty important all. Do I have to say my address? Okay, you know where I'm at. I just want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak, just to figure back off what previous speaker said. Just want to say thank you. We had a wonderful Pride event. Talked to Brandon already, including we had over two hundred participants. Especially want to thank the ones for police who worked partnered with us, who came in, were, they were excellent. I mean, they were the best community partners one bit asked for. They came in, they saw what the event was about. They also actively engaged with the protesters outside. I thought that was such a beautiful thing to see. And I want to thank those protesters who remain civil. We may not agree on a lot of things, but when they actively, I think that shows what our community can be when we have disagreements. Again, I also want to thank the Elks who faced a lot of pushback for hosting the event. I want to thank them for opening up their doors to our community members. I want to thank Inclusion throughout the host event. We look forward to having them next year and again, happy Pride Month.
Anybody online? Pardon me, anybody online?
Everybody.
You have one more person who did not have an opportunity to sign in, Mr. Jake Griffin.
Okay.
I spoke to Danielle earlier. She told me to come here to this meeting, so I do appreciate you.
We'll need you to say your full name and address.
My name is Jake Griffin, eleven fifteen Anderson Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to come here today. I am a prospective business owner here in Warrensburg. I do have a, I would like to start a micro dispensary here in Warrensburg. However, this is one of the maps that you guys made here at City Council, so I'll pass it to them. They've already seen it. It is quite restrictive for somebody like, somebody like myself. You look on here, there's probably a little small, you can see that's literally where I could place my business. Your zoning requirements here for the residential, put on an extra hundred feet, I believe, could be a thousand. It says a thousand feet, but I believe it's a hundred. I could be wrong. As well as there's a additional requirement that you be two hundred and fifty feet away from any liquor establishment here in Warrensburg. That is somewhat problematic, given the retail spaces that you have here in Warrensburg that is available. When I had spoken to some of the community partners here, they've been pretty, you know, pretty supportive in what I'm trying to do. They've all kind of given me the same general idea that this town is pretty big for its size and one dispensary probably doesn't fit the needs of, you know, college students or just our general population. So I come here today and I'm trying to, I guess, figure out if there's anything that we can do about residential buffer as well as liquor establishment. Requirement here for the zoning that makes it almost impossible for myself to set up one of these businesses. Another issue that I do face here is that the applications for this are accepted starting on July twenty-seventh, I believe, by the city authority. And you do have to have a physical proposed facility address that we've been [inaudible 0:10:56] by the state prior to mine, [inaudible 0:11:00]. So it's not like I applied for it and I guarantee get the license. They literally place your name in a powerball drawing, put your name. And those are two, two of those are issued per our congressional [inaudible 0:11:32]. So I guess I come here and I ask, you know, what can we do about this to make this a conducive environment for me to establish a business here? When I talk to people here on Pine Street, there's one of these businesses are available for rent right on the end of Pine Street. It's eleven hundred bucks a month. You know, it's something a small business can do. However, when you talk to people up by Starbucks or right next to Verizon, that place costs just about five thousand dollars a month. It's not too conducive for a small business. So again, you know, one of these areas on this map is down by Sonic and it seems like it's a area that could be opened up without that residential zoning requirement as well as by Chipotle and McDonald's. So I guess I'll turn it over to you guys if you have any questions for me or anything I can answer.
Specifically what business, a micro what?
Micro dispensary. So that's marijuana.
Oh, okay.
So I shared with Victor Griffin earlier this afternoon that we had originally discussed loosening up some of our requirements previously, but we never really heard from anyone from the community who, where these would be challenges. So that he was welcome to bring that to city council and that we can have conversations with Barb and myself in our planning commission. So if you all want to take Mr. Griffin's comments under advisement, then we can talk to, we can see how we want to move forward after that. If we go ahead and, are those just our [inaudible 0:12:01]?
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please do send an email. Okay. Missed license matters from the mayor and or city council. But they've been doing a great job and now it's summertime. It's going to get a lot heavier. So appreciate everybody's efforts working for the city. I've been hearing good comments about the pool staff. Been reading them online and all. It seems like they've been being met with some less than happy customers and they've been being dealt with and observed as being really well, the employees. Okay, city managers report.
I know several of our department directors want to talk to you about a few things. It's been a while since we've been all together. So do you want to kick it off, Mr. Vias?
Good evening, Mayor Council. So to get you up to speed on a few things that city staff on the public worksite has been working on and things that we are contemplating. One such item would be a have a sponsorship, a sponsorship policy at the cemetery and what that would look like could come the form of like a Peter O'Callaghan that would advertise their services. This is very preliminary, but it's something that we are working on, just as a way to bring in some form of revenue to help pay for some of the operational costs that we see at the cemetery in addition to switching out the type of grass that we're using there as well. So anything that could alleviate some of that operational cost, we're going to explore all options. So that is something that I wanted to share. Plenty of work I still have to do. But anyway, that is one item that we are contemplating. Another thing that for the Cooper Boulevard extension project, one of the, the things that Energy and Sustainability Task Force and I discussed was having a, before the trees get cleared for the road to try to salvage what we can in the form of an auction or selling them off. And so what those trees could then be used for in repurposed or would be getting additional funding and for street tree maintenance around the city. Utilizing additional [inaudible 0:12:53]. Street trees around town, around areas of town that lack a good tree canopy. It could also come in the form of rain gardens to help improve water quality. But those are things that I would definitely partner with the Energy Sustainability Task Force on to identify where it'd be good areas of town to be able to do that. So we're really trying to be opportunistic about this project and ways in which we can make a difference in the community. Again, within the combined and given the constraints of our current budget. So I'm very excited about that and very excited to continue good work with the Energy and Sustainability Task Force. A few things that I think would strike the high school students well, so our sidewalk improvement program in our efforts to improve walkability, accessibility and connectivity. Unfortunately, due to rain and other events, we were only able to improve roughly four hundred fifteen linear feet of sidewalk, but that's still a big difference. So we are going to, we're going to continue on with making vast improvements throughout our sidewalk network. Probably the, a big topic that I also wanted to provide some transparency on is what happened on Friday and then over the course of the weekend with our internet and other things going out. So there's a lot of moving parts here and I want to try my best to use layman's terms, especially concepts that I was able to kind of wrap my head around. At approximately ten thirty, eleven o'clock, city personnel, in addition to our private contractor. At approximately ten thirty, eleven o'clock, uh city personnel, in addition to um our private contractor that we can uh contract, but. Um, we're prepared to make a routine maintenance um at uh. At our generator. And so the, the purpose behind the generator. Is to provide a backup source of energy to keep the server room going. Um, so as part of that routine maintenance, um, it's not a breaker box, it's more computer than anything else. Um, but you flip a switch more or less from uh relying on every G to the generator. Um, so when you flip the switch from the utility to the generator, there's about a four, five second lag. Um, so between that four to five second lag, our uninterrupted power supply source then kicks in. The un- un- the uninterrupted power source, or UPS for short, um fills in the gap of that four seconds. We are not really sure why or how this happened. Uh, this was largely on, this was unperceivable, no one could have predicted this. When we switch from utility to the generator. Um, and that switch occurred probably five or six times of killing it, going to the other source, killing it, going to the other source. Um, that's where the mayhem started. Um, and so what was primarily affected was our switch. Um, and so the switch um is a key component within our network. So when one computer talks to the, uh, another computer, um, that goes through a switch, um, and then that is the network. So when that was affected. Uh, with the switch that rendered certain communications. Not operable at all. And so uh. For whatever reason, our UPS also went out. Um, so that's about a twelve thousand dollar unit. Um, and over the weekend, um, I'm very, and on Friday, I'm very thankful for our dedicated uh IT staff. They're working on this very hard. Um, Gary put in fourteen hours um on Sunday alone. Um, and while, while I was there, my uh, my purpose was to provide moral support, um, but also to try to figure out how this happened. Um, so I've still been trying to wrap my, my brain around this, uh, but to at least add some transparency to what, to what had happened. It unfortunately did affect all city services. Um, and so uh that. I'm, I'll be doing and conducting an after action report on that, uh, trying to see if there's any improvements that we could make procedurally. Um, with the next time that we uh mess with the generator, which will be twenty eight days from now. And so that's how often you, you should at least maintain that to make sure everything is working appropriately. Also, on Sunday around three in the morning, um, at our East Wastewater Treatment Plant. Uh, our main power line burned in half. And so uh that rendered two of our sequencing batch reactors or SBRs uh basically inoperable. Um, so staff had to go in manually do everything. Um, and we were able to get a contractor to come in on short notice um to uh s- uh provide service to us in the form of fixing that. And identify where the, where the faults occurred. Um, so uh fortunately, everything is okay now, but. Um, th- this week was not friendly to public works. So, um, with that, I'll stand for any questions uh that you may have.
I don't know, so the line just. Fell apart or?
Essentially, this is, these have been uh issues that have been plaguing uh both plants since about two thousand nine.
Hmm.
Um, so it. That there have been some uh issues with um. Uh, the, the appropriate size may not have been used in terms of the power line. Um, and we've been running into that with our SCADA upgrades. Um, so where we've had to issue change orders um to fix things that weren't sized appropriately. Um, it, it could also have been that maybe they were nicked at some point or. A tree root or something got into it and then water was able to infiltrate into the power line and cause it to. Um, over time deteriorates to the point where it sizzled in half.
Was this underground then or?
Yeah, uh, and so it's, it's hard to determine the root cause um of what, of what has happened here. Um, but that is also something that I'll be trying to figure out as well.
Sounds like a great weekend, Enrico.
It's very fun.
Again, uh shining outlook of our employees and stuff.
So how often have, have, how recently have we ta- tested that UPS backup and, and the generators switch off or just gave out?
It, 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 I will say that um uh from. From a management of how we've been doing our assets, I guess certainly improved. Um, and it, it's hard to tell whether things were wired appropriately or anything like that. I, I, I really don't know. Um, I'll have to look at our logs of how often we've. Maintained our UPS. Uh, with the switch going out, that I have no idea uh what, what caused that. It could have been a malfunction. Um, in both the UPS and that switch, um, and I just weren't relying on pieces of equipment. Um, so I, I really don't know, honestly, but that'll be part of the investigative process, so.
So have you replaced the UPS?
Uh, so we, we will be. Um, and fortunately, uh, with uh our contract that we have with Dell. Um, so really Dell was kind of the lifeline for us. Um, so we, we worked with them over the weekends. Um, and they, in their uh computer guru ways, uh, were able to uh get us up and running. Um, so it was a twenty thousand dollar annual contract that we have with them that uh really came in handy and there's money well spent in, in a situation like this. So they provided us a switch for free um as part of it. So um, on the UPS side, we'll have to.
We didn't lose any data or anything or is our data on hard drive or is it on the cloud or both or?
So. Uh, we do have uh, uh, when we perform backups, a lot of that does go to cloud, so.
And we have been moving our email exchange to the cloud. We recently just transitioned encode to the cloud and so. Being able to make some of those Zoom, um, our phones are in the cloud, although they'll be considered on the internet, we couldn't get those. Um, but I could still get to the calls on my cell phone because we were in the cloud. So making some of those uh choices of how we handle that has also, was also very beneficial. And Rico shared with me Friday morning that uh we had not been making those sorts of transitions. This would have been much more catastrophic.
Cause in the past, we used to run all tape backups and uh. There's very limited tape backups now in there, Randy. And there's also redundant uh server station, that's fire station two, two that helps. Get stuff back online.
So you do daily backups, plus backups during the day?
We do backups often.
Great, Nally.
Yeah.
It's like we dodged a bullet.
It's been a few weeks. Um, shared some information if you have any questions on some of that that's come out over the past four or five weeks that we have to answer. A couple of things that I want to keep you updated on. Um, our newest uh pumper out of this station, if you haven't seen it driving around lately, it's been about a month now, it's. Uh, it still works, we can drive it, it just alarms the entire time. We're waiting on some pieces for the diesel exhaust fluid system to come in to, to make that repair. Um, so it, uh, as, as we've seen some relief in some of our other, other items and the, that, that supply chain issue, apparently they're still holding death parts pretty close. Cause there's so, so many issues with them. So we're working on getting those in, so we can get that truck back on the money. We're still. Uh, where we need to be as far as apparatus, uh, being able to provide service. Our uh twenty twenty-three structural PPE order arrived six months early, which was amazing. Um, it was exciting too. We checked on it. And they told us it had been moved up and said, uh, to be delivered in September and then the next week, like four or five days later it showed up. Um, so uh, that was, that was exciting. Uh, we were able to get ten sets this year. Uh. And then kind of moved it into my next item. Uh, we did receive, uh, as if you recall, the uh Missouri ARPA. State local fiscal recovery fund fire protection grant earlier this year. The application process started last November, it was supposed to be tied up and. Ready to go by in December, they ran into several delays in that, uh, the, the award was late. Uh, anyways, in that timeframe, the price of the items that we were going for originally has, has increased. So. I have submitted a modification to our original budget, which was twenty thousand from the state. It was, uh, we're gonna take another little dent out of structural PPE and then work also on our ballistic protection. Um, we're gonna defer that ballistic piece and get an additional seven sets of bunker gear that we'll need. Get caught up on that we, we struggled the last few years. So uh, still making some progress there on that, still get some stuff that we need. It's uh essential, but unfortunately, just six, seven, eight months later, price had changed, we had to modify. Those are the big things.
Can you just, for the public's knowledge, uh. The change in structural firefighting gear, uh, which is what the RP, the PPE is, uh, increased in, let's say, that last three years.
Uh, so we're currently, uh, the exact same stuff, give or take, there's bits and material changes and stripping that price, but we're looking about thirty five hundred dollars a set, which. Three years ago, we were probably about. Twenty, two thousand, two one hundred, um, on the high end. So, I mean, pants were, used to be the cheap on some piece of the ensemble about. Seven hundred a piece and those are over a thousand pounds, so. A lot of that uh is material uh shortages. Um, of, of the big driving force is labor. Um, and so to get it caught up, uh, the way I understand it from our representatives, they're, I mean, they've, they've had to go like everybody else and they paid premium for labor to have it to be able to make the product. So that's obviously may reflect in the price, but very important, uh, out of all of the tools we have, I think we've understood that the most. It keeps us warm and cool from the same time.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks to you.
Well, it's hard to call catastrophic, catastrophic, thank you. But uh, we, we've been moving forward, we had uh Matt Morgan, we brought him on as chaplain, which I put that in my summer writing. Um, that's gonna be a pretty, pretty nice for the officers, I believe. Been good for personnel. Um. With that, we've been hosting a lot of tra- uh, training, radar training and then uh them shooting vehicle assault training, so we're hosting that this week as well. Um, we've had some building issues, uh, that you're aware of, uh, what's our garage door opener that, uh, they had a spring above the garage door, it's a pretty large spring. I had to get it lifted in, but. This place that we did that, I think, two years ago, a year and a half goes, over three thousand to do that. And then uh REC unit went out, gotta give a shout out to Brian Jones, he's pretty amazing. Uh, he was able to save. Save a motor, a pan motor, I believe, from another unit from a year or two ago. And we're able to use it plus a new one and get this air conditioner and kind of let it go on till the end of this year, but you're, um, we have it in the budget for next year, so. Hopefully, it will continue to work, so, but that's what we got.
Nope, alright, thank you.
Um, in the finance uh report before you, we talked about staff, we hired um Jeff Tishner, I won't pronounce his name well. Um, as our new billing specialist and he started this morning and so he's excited to be here. He's a Warrensburg resident. So we're glad that he's here. Carl's last day is on Friday. And so um, we are going to be sad to see Carl leave, that's lots of institutional knowledge that's going out the door as well. Um, we're doing lots of cross, uh, cross-training um between staff to make sure that we have. Shoes to fill if somebody is out for one reason or another. Um, we do a lot of that. In the report, we talked about being able to sell six seats and we'll probably, we'll kind of run in status quo. You heard this evening about budgets, so um, you'll get to learn, get to hear lots more of that, however, the next quarter, five uh meetings, I don't know, so. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
That was good. Marcy, no. One thing when you get up there, Danielle, if you will cover, and I meant to ask Enrico. About the invitation for the uh, no, I saw it on Facebook today. Or residing in your plan.
Uh, we, I was just trying to share a little bit about what we've been working on. Uh, my, my report in the packet was a little short. Um. But uh, I, I did want to share that this is what, uh, what we've been working on is um creating this webpage and. I did write a few things kind of while for the indoor webpage and IT stuff, but um. So we are just putting together uh this uh information. Uh, we set it, set it up a little bit differently this time, rather than just all in one long uh. Page, we've set it up in a tab with information talking about when, when the election is and what the um. Upgrades and improvements are, how much it's for um frequently asked questions. Uh, to kind of go through that, uh, talking about the sewer revenue bonds, exactly what that means, that they're paid for with user fees. Um, how they will, uh, the bonds will impact the sewer bill. Um, just a reminder that uh we. City council raised the sewer rates in April of twenty twenty-three. Um, in understanding that there will be no crease in this year twenty twenty-four and an anticipated increase in of nine percent in twenty twenty-five. It just, that's a five-year model that we have in place and kind of what those overall numbers are. Um. And explaining again, when a typical resident, uh, if a typical resident uses forty-five hundred gallons of water, um, their. Bill was forty-nine dollars a month, um, in twenty twenty-three with fifty-three, in twenty twenty-four with fifty-three, and then fifty-six in twenty twenty-five. Just so folks can really understand how that, we're looking at about. Twenty. What is that difference? Four times twelve, about fifty dollars a year, Michelle. So, um, wanted to make sure you all knew that was there. One of the other things that we included, because we did reference it a lot in our educational materials, uh, we made sure that our studies. Uh, that uh sewer utility rate study, that five-year comprehensive is uh very accessible to folks, so they could tap in there and take a look at those numbers as well as uh the Warrensburg wastewater. Treatment capacity study that we did in twenty twenty-one. So if folks really want to see those numbers of how we are bumping up against that capacity, um, they can uh look at there, it's uh. Some light reading, um, right before bed. So, uh. One of the other that you saw, we are hosting an open house at our wastewater treatment plant. Um. Actually, it'll be our west one, uh, which is across from Highway fifty. Uh, we're gonna host an open house. We'd just like to invite folks to come out, learn how the wastewater treatment plant not only works. Um, but also how we fund it, um, and see like all the work that we truly do out there to remove the nutrients, to make sure that the quality of water that we are. Taking out of the city of Warrensburg and putting back into the creek, um, is, is a quality and why that's important. And I think if folks can come out. And see the science and really the high-end equipment and technical equipment that we have out there, um. Cause it is very scientific, um, and how we make that all work. So, uh, we wanted to open up that opportunity for Warrensburg residents, and so that is on, remind you what date that is. So that is on the fourteenth of this month, um, from three to six, open house, come and go. We'll be doing tours, um, as well as having some. Opportunities to share about the sewer revenue bond special election on August eighth. Um, one of the other. Uh, pieces of this that we are working on, um, is uh hosting a lunch and learn. Um, with uh developers in our community, just so we can share exactly how um upgrading the sewer system impacts them in the business that they do and making sure that, that they have any questions about it. That we'll be able to answer um any of those for those developers. Um, we are also, um, at that time going to share. Whitman Area Leadership Council's housing study, um, that is finalized and is ready to be distributed. Um, and we're gonna put it on our um website, but also thought this would be an opportunity for us to share that information, um, with that particular group of folks, um, to think it'll be of. Concern to them. Um, and they've all been waiting for it, they know Whitman's been, Whitman Area Leadership Council's been talking about it for a while. And so I think they're all excited to go see what came out of that, so.
Are they projecting additional residents?
Um, so really what this study does is it shows what kind of gaps we have in the housing market, and so it shows. And so it shows the quantity of housing that we have, the various types, single family, multifamily, duplexes, apartments, it kind of took that through that. And actually directed Warrensburg, Villia, Higginsville, all of those communities that serve Whitman. And then it actually goes into the quality of the housing that we have available and how our community needs to what kind of, there's an actual plan that's associated with it and what we need to do to address some of those gaps that we have. I haven't had, I've briefed through it, I've leafed through it, I haven't had an opportunity to read through it completely. And so we will absolutely be coming back to city council with a presentation on that. WALK is working on how we're rolling that out. And so I think it would be a good opportunity for representative of WALK, which I'm on that as is Suzanne. But I do think it would be great for our president Greg Perkins to come out and share with you all that, that information as well. So working on our marketing and rollout plan for the.
Does that include affordability, I guess? It seems to be the real problem we have is.
Sorry, that's one of the big ones. I think that is all I have. That, we do have a
How do we get to the west?
So this will be one of those access points that those closes off after they do their improvements to Highway fifty. But when you go to where Business Fifty, if you take Business Fifty West all the way to where it kind of turns, just go across the road there. You'll go across and then up. And we'll make sure, that's a good point, I think we'll make sure we give directions on how to get there as a follow-up to our invitation.
Kind of the world's ground is there, next to jackets.
Yeah.
It's just on the west side of that.
Okay.
But just straight across from fifty and fifty west.
All right, if you go over a couple of cattle guards, you get it.
Okay, so I should go over cattle guards.
All right.
Did that, did that, anything else, Miss Danielle, any of the other directors? Sounds like we're done. Next item is a closed session, motion to move part of this meeting pursuant to section six one oh dot oh two one over Rice Statues of Missouri relating to one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential information or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. Two, leasing purchase or sale of real estate by a public governmental body. And thirteen, individually identified personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Motion, please.
I assume those. Osborne?
Yes.
Uler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Chris.
Yes, with that, we adjourn. Come on, let's go props three.